Are we ready to call the meeting to order? Please rise to the pitch.
Welcome, everyone. And I'm gonna say this now before everybody departs. I want to wish you all a wonderful holiday season and we'll see you back here in January. We will start with item 1.0, Maple Street School Tours. Sorry about that. Shouldn't be able to fix this.
It seems those winter summers here. Birds out to the south even before the winter. The next thing you know, when gifts of snow will appear. Bringing the beauty only the winter can bring. Still I sigh a sigh as I say goodbye. To the painted trees and the autumn sky. And I look instead to the days ahead. And I grace myself for the winter. For the winter. Light the candles, light the lights this holiday. Fire up the brightest lights this holiday. Put on your merry, put on your bow. Let your inner spirit show. Bring out the happy, bring out the cheer. It's that magic time of year. Everybody singing la 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 la. Everybody singing la la la. Everybody singing la 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 la. Everybody singing la la la. La. This holiday, this holiday. La. This holiday, this holiday. See her twinkling everywhere this holiday. Sounds of joy are in the air this holiday. Put on your best and put on your lean. Put a star upon a tree. Bring out the joy, bring out the fun. Celebrations have begun. Everybody singing la 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 la. Everybody singing la la la. Everybody singing la 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 la. Everybody singing la la la. La. This holiday, this holiday. La. This holiday, this holiday. Peaceful feelings all around. Voices sharing sweetest sound. Peaceful feelings all around. Voices sharing sweetest sound. Oh, everybody singing la 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 la. Everybody singing la la la. Everybody singing la 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 la. Everybody singing la la la. Everybody singing la 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 la. Everybody singing la la la. Everybody singing la la la. Everybody singing la la la.
Okay, thank you. That was Mrs. Parrott Manley and a small ensemble from the Maple Street Choir. And I now have a small section of the Maple Street Band. These are fifth grade students who have been playing their saxophones for about four months. We have a few selections of holiday songs. Great. Our next piece that they are going to play is actually a song that these students composed themselves. They started off by just making small sections and then putting those sections all together. They then had the opportunity to edit their song, revise their song, make any changes that they wanted to. These students started this quite a few months ago, but I have some students that are currently doing the project right now. And they're able to put their song into the iPad, listen to what it sounds like. They can make any changes by the way that they hear it, and then they can hear those sounds right away. So it's been a really fun project we've been working on. And this saxophone section named their song Trainwreck.
Thank you very much. Can I ask you to introduce each of the students so they know who they are?
Sure.
There's a microphone there.
Okay. Which microphone is this one? The saxophone students are Josh Miles, Kenny Betterly, and Alexina Terriault. And the choir students. This is Jaden Bassett, Joe Wheeler, Robert Sullivan, Aiden Lake, Isabella Green, Daniella Ratti, Anaya Little, Connor, and Abdullah.
Thank you very much. That was wonderful. I'm so impressed with the saxophone because I could not do that.
You took a lot of guts.
I love the song selections because I've never heard some of them and they were great. So thank you so much, Lynn. Thank you, Parrott, for being here tonight and sharing them with us at the school.
Yes, thank you so much. And before we move on to item 1.2, our town council member for being here with us today. And now we will move on to 1.2, the school peacefulness.
Thank you, Mrs. Fish. We have representatives from the Loma Municipal who are here today. You have the PowerPoint being out in front of you, and then they're also going to use the screen. So I'll introduce first of all Tom Jacobitis, who is the education consultant, Mr. Ivan Tom.
Good evening. Mike Zubo.
I'm Mike Zubo. I'm the director of planning for my Loma Municipal. Thank you. I know we gave you guys a pretty lengthy packet. We'll try to be as brief as possible since this will be our first time here, but not our last time here. We have a tough act to follow for tonight, but we'll see if we can be able to keep up. I know they set the bar pretty high. What we're gonna want to do is go through a lot of different data we looked at. But we're not gonna really spend a lot of time getting into it in that it'll take you a little while to be able to absorb it. But we're gonna touch on some of the key points and be able to introduce some ideas that we may want, or you may direct us to take a look at as part of some potential options once you see what the draft existing conditions are. We have a number of maps tonight. Those are reliant on census data. What we did was we put together this little key map so you could see how each of your elementary schools roughly corresponds to different census block groups. We're not gonna go through each one block by block, but this will be a good reference for after the time that you want to go back in and begin to take a look at some of the demographics in the individual elementary schools. Taking a look at population density overall, it's no surprise that your largest clusters of residents are that in the northern tier around Maple Street School and the older developed section of the town. Overall, you're looking at densities of about 2,800 per square mile. Taking a look at population change, this is where we begin getting into some of those key factors that impact enrollment. I know the Board of Ed always takes a look at enrollment and the change over a number of years. But what we do is we take a look at all the factors that are behind that. Over the last decade, there's been modest growth in Vernon, about 4% overall. The areas highlighted in green in all the maps show areas that have gained, whatever that indices is, whether it's housing units, total population, square population. The areas in red are typically showing losses. And the darker the red, the more heavier the losses are in those areas. So you see that as a common theme throughout all of the maps that we have in our PowerPoint tonight. What we want to take a look at, the total population across the town. We rely on one of the sources that the state puts out, which is the Connecticut DOT has their own projections, which takes into effect some environmental or some economic factors. And when they look at prioritizing projects for roadway construction, they develop projections for each community across the state. Overall, we're looking at some slow growth. As you can see on the chart, that there has been some fluctuations in a little loss in population in 2000 and a little growth in 2000, 2010. And looking at some very modest growth going forward. The census enumerates all school age children. So what we want to do is take a look at not only the students that are in Vernon public schools. Later on in our report, we'll take a look at the students that are Vernon residents that attend other public or private or parochial schools. But this just takes a look at the general school age population. And it's a good sanity check from when we just look at enrollment alone to see what those trends are. And as you know, you've experienced pretty steep enrollment declines over the last decade from the change from 2000 to 2010. We're looking at about 11%, and those correspond to different areas across the community impacting different elementary schools. This is another way to take a look at your community, which really breaks it up into an age pyramid or an age tree. What we see here when we begin looking into this is the hollow outlines around the 2010 data and the full colors are 2000. You'll see that this is the profile of a typical community that's beginning to age in place, whether that's due to a stagnant economy that we've had here in Connecticut or just the makeup of the community. You'll see where those bars, those hollowed out bars extend over the color bars from the ages 50 all the way up to the ages of 70. So we see some continued aging in place there and continued aging of the community overall. When we began looking at females of childbearing age, we began taking a look at what potential for future births could be. We identified different areas of either growth or decline based on the last 10 years. Because any females of childbearing age in the 2000 census likely resulted in births that have occurred in children that are starting to enter the system. So as a baseline from that, we look at where the 2010 has changed. And you'll see we have a modest loss of about 2% in those cohorts going forward. So what that tells us is that we'll probably have some continued stagnant births. When we begin looking at the births reported to Vernon residents and the chart on the right, you'll see where there's a lot of undulation, which looks like the typical birth cycles. That looks a little over exaggerated, really just due to the scale. We have a scale of less than 100 births on there. It's been fairly flat, but you can see those year-to-year variations on the chart. I think overall, we're seeing a decline. When we ran a couple different projections to begin looking at future births, they've all showed a little bit of stability, but nowhere near getting back to what we had with the pre-recession levels of 360, 370 births. We're looking at probably around bid 340s, 350 births going forward over about the next five years. And this will be useful in that those birth projections are filling in the back half of our student enrollment or that second five years of our student enrollment data. I'm not going to go through the population change. This is a nice summary, which wasn't intended to stand alone. We'll move on to some of our key housing composition variables. I think one of the ones I'd like to point out is the growth in non-family households. That is a trend we're seeing in other communities across the state. Especially in these economic times, that's something other than your traditional family, whether it's younger individuals in their 20s living together due to economic times or young people entering their workforce, still staying at home, moving back in with peers. That's picked up in that number as well. One of the key factors we look at when we do enrollment projections is average household size. Quite surprising to us in Vernon, we actually saw a very modest shrinking of that average household size. We've seen a much larger shrinking of that across many of the other communities we've worked at in the state of Connecticut. Looking at the total housing unit change, it's about 8% overall. You added about 1,000 additional housing units throughout the district or throughout the town from when the last census was conducted. And this takes into effect teardowns as well as redevelopment. I know there's been some redevelopment of the mills going on in Studio with one and two bedrooms. So that all gets picked up in here over about a decade period of time. So there's been more housing units today than there was back in 2000. Annual permits, this is a good indication. As you know, student enrollment is tied to the housing market. New starts, whether it's a subdivision or anything of greater density, increases your carrying capacity or your ability to have additional students in the system. What you'll notice over the last few years, that number has been fairly stagnant. You did have a little bit of a spike in the late 2009 to 2012. That could have just been pent up from the early part of the Great Recession. But overall, we're still seeing a continued slow market from the standpoint of new starts. A little different picture when we take a look at housing sales. We have two different stacked line charts here. And the chart on the top right is that is really the key driver. That's taking a look at our housing sales. What you'll see with that is there's been a pretty steady increase since about 2011 in the total number of sales. We had to extrapolate 2015 because we didn't have the full year's data. But overall, you're getting just back to where you were at right before the economic downturn, where you suffered that giant dip between 2008 and 2011. So it's slowly improving housing market overall. But when you take a look at the bottom chart on the right, the sales prices are still pretty stagnant. Taking a look at the turnover or the potential turnover are those rental units, that's families that have a level of mobility, being able to move within the community. And it's no surprise that south of 84, as large as your standalone single-family homes, not a lot of rentals stopped there. And with some of the older neighborhoods where you have apartment complexes and those two- and three-family homes, those have the much higher percentage of rental. But overall, about 44% of all of the housing in the community is rental housing. When we look at the homeownership over age 65, what this tells us is this is when individuals are still maintaining ownership for past their working days and whether or not they're staying at home. It identifies homes that could potentially be ripe for turnover or new young families in town following that traditional cycle of being able to turn homes over to families, giving them back to the school system. What it tells us is that there is a pretty large stock of those homes in certain areas of the community, particularly along the eastern half and the more suburban sort of lower density areas of town, as well as over on the western half near Skinner Road School. We reviewed the 2012 plant conservation development, took a look at any of the key land use issues or as well as any new projects coming to light. And those that seem to be are the continued efforts and work in some of the older middle areas, being able to convert those back into adaptive reuse into residential units. Getting into your individual enrollment trends, I'm sure you're very well aware of the data here. It's quite interesting, at least from our standpoint, having worked in many different communities across the state, and that your enrollment decline started to really happen well before the Great Recession. There's many drivers at play, but oftentimes we're seeing this happen right around 2007, 2008 to see that similar decline. What's of interest is back in 2011, from the point of view of about 3,550 students, you experienced additional 11% decline overall. So it is continuing, whether or not we're getting very close to the bottom. That's what we'll get to in a little bit. Not only having the decline in births which you've had on the stagnant housing market, but also taking a look at what's offered of it, what are the offerings for the regional school system across the board. Being part of the 30th school region puts you at the impact and the effect of what crack and what Hartford public schools and some of the other magnets are doing in the region, I think. And you took a stacked bar chart there and began to look at when crack offerings and additional Hartford offerings have come online, the number of Vernon resident students that are opting in for those programs. Now I thought what was of particular interest in the most recent data point we had was in 2013 and 14, was just the sheer jump in the 3K number there. The chart on the right tells a little bit more information than that when we begin to overlay private school. And very similar to many other communities, when the Great Recession hit, we saw a pullback of those private school enrollments, whether it resulted in some of those parochial schools actually consolidating, which we've seen in many communities are just really cutting back and the families cutting back because they don't have the additional dollars to be able to send their students to those schools. What we haven't seen is a major rebound to that because the number is just so low. Students coming back into Vernon has been imperceptible. What we are seeing is that other public, those are the magnet offerings. That is on a precipitous rise in the blue line on the chart. Overall, looking at the elementary enrollment, you can see that you had that decline and you had a pretty relative period of stability. And then it's just a real slow decline now. So taking a look at that, you need to believe that we're getting close to the bottom there. Taking a look at the middle, what happens is that was a lag with the matriculation of students moving through. Right now, you're at an all-time low of just under 690 students, sixth through eighth grade. And then high schools, really, you just saw the chart for the other magnet schools, the choice schools. And that's really where we're getting impacted here, where we're down under 900 students for the last three years in a row, which is a drop off of about 300 from where you were at your recent disor tie. What I'll pause on is taking a look at the current student enrollment across the district. What this does is this takes a look at your existing attending zones and looking at where the students are actually residing to be able to fill out those elementary schools. What jumped out at us was up near the northeast Maple Street School. We have a discontinuity in some colors there on the chart where you can see that peach color. So there's clearly a satellite area for Skinner Road and a satellite area for Skinner Road School. Road School as well. How that feeds into the patterns and how that impacts the enrollment, I think if we can just hear a little bit more from the board on one of those questions, and when did that satelliteing or the districting come into play, or was that out, we should just stare where we had, you know, satellite area for the school that could help us when we began to fine tune our final enrollment projections. I'll just touch on a projection primer. We use a cohort survival. It's the only statistic we valid, the grade level specific data. It accounts for a lot of those other variables that I had just gone through at a much greater level of detail. What it relies on are these persistency ratios. I'm not going to get through the whole table, but I think what's important to point out is that when you're projecting and when you're looking at doing enrollment work, you typically find some level of stability within those persistency ratios. What struck me as quite interesting for Vernon was that the persistency ratios kind of jumped around a lot. In particular, when I look at the birth decay over the last few years, that's that column on the left. This past year, you were about sixty-nine percent. So for every hundred births you had five years ago, you got sixty-nine kindergarten students. You look back over your period of time, back in 2004, 2005, that number was as high as ninety-three percent. And it's changed incrementally throughout, where you had sort of peaks and valleys. It's kind of interesting in that, you know, we don't see a lot of changes everywhere in a lot of highly mobile communities, communities with a lot of different housing stock, and we haven't seen anything where it really jumped around that much in recent times. It was something that caught our eye. When we use that data to begin developing our enrollment projections, we opted for, you know, taking a three-year look at it, saying, you know, we're in a little bit of an improving economy because of the housing market, where we use a three-year average of those persistency ratios. We've developed projections by grade and then fit the projections to the individual schools. Overall, what we're looking at is about a two-hundred student decline. It's some variability between different grade groupings. What we're assuming under this is that there's about a hundred and seventy-four kids in pre-K right now, that that will continue. Anytime we do district-wide projections, the elementary is always the first five years are always the most accurate. The next five years are really on your birth assumption, as well as your housing assumption holding true. Typically, you have a good eight years of middle school projections, and it is valid for ten years for high school projections. So here's what the enrollment projections look like overall. Just a stacked bar chart gives you a nice little picture of it. We provide a little summary below. Overall, the elementary is going to decline about six percent over the first five years and really flatten out. We're going to look at an additional about one and a half percent or so. The biggest decline is going to be experienced at the middle school over the next decade, about thirteen percent. And the high school enrollments are going to be relatively, it's a slower decline, but then it really ramps up for the back half of the projection to have a decline overall of about eight percent for the projection horizon. So what we did with these then is use those as normalizing factors. So we use the district-wide projections and then began projecting at all of the individual elementary schools. We're stamping this as preliminary now, we're still awaiting the live birth data from the State Department of Public Health. What that'll give us is birth records by address, so we can exactly see what the different birth trends are in each of the individual elementary schools, in order to be able to fine tune these projections. What really, I think is key to us, and you'll see later on in the projection report, is northeast. Northeast was one of the schools that we identified as having the greatest need for space, northeast. Under our ten-year projections as we stand now, is going to be relatively unchanged over the course of the next decade. So that space concern, that already exists today, is going to continue. Overall, in the next five years, all the other elementary schools show slight declines, with Center Road having the greatest decline, and Center Road actually continuing to decline into the second five years, as well as Skinner Road having that continued decline over the entire ten-year horizon.
In terms of educational program, you have two drivers that really determine how you're going to use your space assets. It's the number of students that you have in the schools and the nature of those students' needs, as well as the kinds of programs and services that you're going to be offering to students. On September eighteenth, I've conducted five focus groups with stakeholders in the community. I met with the central office administrators, elementary and secondary administrators, teachers, and parents, community groups. Really quite an interesting experience, they're very much involved and enthusiastic. In this slide, you'll see some of the elements that were presented, or that were presented to me. These represent their perceptions. They are recorded exactly as they expressed them to me. Superintendent McCary will provide you with some detailed backup information at a later date, so you can see what each of these groups have stated in summary of their opinions. So in terms of anticipated, there are five questions, or six questions that were basically asked by each of these groups. What changes, if any, are expected in program offerings? What newer expanded programs do you envision? What programs or services will be eliminated or reduced? What enrollment trends may affect the school programs or the school organization? How does space assets help or hinder program implementation? And how would the community react to changes in school organization? So we have some sample items here, so anticipated changes. People are expecting that there may be more preschool offerings in time. As you well know, there's a state as well as national push for universal preschools. Mike has alluded to declining enrollment. Some folks look at that as a problem. You might look at that as an opportunity, because as enrollment declines, you have space assets that now become available to you. You have staff that could be redeployed to the areas of program that you had hoped or would like to have implemented over time, but weren't able to do it, particularly during the previous economic downturn, where most school districts in Connecticut were facing severe budget limitations. So you have a changing demographic in this community as well. The teachers and principals expressed to me that there are more children, probably coming to schools, there are greater numbers of students with home languages other than English, and coming into school not requiring some English language learning skills. And of course, everybody would like to see more technology in the school. I think we saw an excellent example of music teachers using a quiet remote here. So thank you, you're well on your way. Newer expanded programs, I think people were a little bit cautious about this, interesting ideas because of the recent economic downturn and the budget history. It's not unlike other schools in Connecticut. But basically, the one thing they were talking about is the opportunity for rural languages or language instruction for earlier grades. It doesn't require space, it requires people. And budget cuts have affected some perceptions, and I think that may be a contributing factor in why magnet schools have been somewhat more attractive to kids. On the flip side of that, though, what the middle school folks were telling me is that there's recently been a return of students who had first opted for magnet schools, and having that experience, found that the Vernon Public Middle School is a better option for them at all. The difficulty they have is they project forward a declining enrollment that takes into account those magnet school children, and if they come back during the course of the school year, it exacerbates class size problems, it exacerbates their ability to provide appropriate resources because they weren't expected to be there. So we already talked about some of the enrollment trends and the impacts that they're going to have over time.
Yeah, we're looking to be able to take some of the space assets and some of the input we got from those focus meetings, and be able to help shape some of the options that we may look at, realizing that, you know, there's clearly some discussions there, everybody knows what the situation is with the enrollment decline, but everybody also has some ideas on how best to be able to utilize some of that space going forward. You don't ever want to have an empty space, you never see any in any of the classrooms. So being able to provide a good fit programmatically for it is really one of the goals of going through those focus group meetings are. We toured the school facilities, took a look at the instructional classrooms, total number of full-size classrooms, and a couple things jumped out to us. At northeast, there's clearly no dedicated full-size classroom for music or art, those are served on a cart, and resource rooms overall, there's an parity across the board, equity across the board, and what schools have those. They've been co-opted over time for the need for more instructional classrooms, as you had some different enrollment trends and some different bubbles pass through the school system. So what we want to do is to be able to get a good count of those available full-size classrooms, get a good understanding of where Vernon is going educationally, and then be able to build towards developing what we call functional capacity. So what we develop is, based on the class size guidelines, which we have shown on the slide, as well as employing a standard deployment for full-size classrooms back into the schools, where every school will have an art room, every school will have a music room, every school will have an peer lab, availability for pre-K and one resource room. We factored that into the total number of full-size rooms, and came up with an ideal number of instructional rooms that a school should have. With that said, we took into account those physical deficiencies at those schools that did not have those, and be able to subtract those out of what their operational capacity would be. We developed this functional capacity, which accounts for that, but also uses a ninety percent utilization factor. Anytime you have K-five schools, especially K-five schools that are a little smaller, some of the smallest, two sections per grade, you can never, you know, fit every student per seat, it just doesn't happen, especially when schools group based on geography. So when they group by neighborhood, you're never able to get that economy to scale. We've gone through all of our work over the last decade, and overall, K-five schools that group by neighborhoods in the state of Connecticut typically average between eighty and ninety percent, with that sweet spot being around eighty-five, eighty-six percent overall. Those are even schools that have just gone through major redistricting, reconfiguration, so really optimizing it. It's really hard to be able to get to that mark, so we feel that ninety percent utilization factor is a good number, it's some headway in the planning for this. What I've highlighted in red are those schools that are very near capacity. Obviously, there's an issue at northeast when you look at the inequity in space, as well as Skinner Road operating at a hundred percent overall, while some schools do have some capacity within the buildings themselves. But overall, when you look at having a standard deployment across the board for some parity of resources, you'll be at an utilization of about ninety-three percent based on the amount of space that you have in those five elementary schools. Looking at the middle schools, walked the buildings, counted up the number of full-size classrooms, looked at those that are used for instructional rooms, as well as science and those specialty rooms, basing it off of being able to utilize the building six out of seven periods per day, so meaning that if you had a block schedule, six out of those seven periods would be colored in, giving just a little bit of time for the teachers to be able to use those rooms for, you know, prep meetings or getting set up for programmings. Once again, we use the utilization factor of ninety percent, realizing that, you know, you're not always going to have some classes or some programs that are subscribed to a hundred percent in the school, and we come up with a functional capacity for the middle school as it's operating today of just under seven hundred students, or just under a thousand students of nine hundred and seventy-nine students. Looking at the current enrollment there, you're operating at about seventy percent. What we've noticed overall for the communities that we've worked in with six, eight middle schools, that number is typically around seventy-three to seventy-five percent, and they feel like they're operating at their peak utilization there. Looking at the high school capacity, going through the same exercise of, you know, looking at the period use as well as the utilization, we're looking at a functional capacity there of about eleven hundred, with currently just over eight hundred and twenty students in there, for utilization of about seventy-three percent overall for the high school building. Overall, some of our key summary findings is, we're still looking at a continued slow decline. We don't see much change for that, there's nothing to least believe, there's going to be an uptick, but again, there's nothing to least believe that the decline is going to be slower than we're projecting. Overall, the elementary schools are pretty well utilized at ninety-three percent. However, that's skewed due to northeast being on the extreme high end of a hundred and thirty-one percent, and, you know, Lake Street around seventy percent. Your middle school and high school are, you know, right around that key, you know, bell curve where they would be with the bulk of the other schools across the state. However, can a little bit more efficiency be gained there? Well, yeah, but it's kind of difficult when you look at the size of the class sizes you have today, to be able to say, well, we can move a grade very easily from one school to the next without really overburdening it, and these were just some of our initial takeaways on it. We know we had talked with the administrators, and they floated the idea of taking a look at the sistering schools, which would be a pre-K two, three, five, and just asked us for some initial takes on that. We have been involved in that before, we have gone through long range facility plans, we have tested school buildings for sister schools, and also most recently in Milford, Connecticut. We went through the opposite of, they spent four years as part of a sister school pairing of all their elementary schools, and we just went back and reconfigured them back to a K-five system due to parent outcry, as well as some of the teachers, there was some issues that weren't a good fit for that for their community. What you'll really want to look at is having your buildings, the size of your buildings, and the number of ground floor classrooms, because any school that would be a pre-K two school has different requirements for first floor egress versus those third through fifth graders. So that's just a couple of tidbits on that we wanted to be able to provide. Like I mentioned, with the grade reconfiguration, being able to move a grade up or down, it would be something we would definitely be able to look at. But where it looks right now, just from fifteen thousand feet, that it would be hard pressed to be able to get those additional grades in the building without taking out some of those other programs that have been placed in that building to use up that space over the last decade or so. So in an under ideal world, you'd probably want to be able to find a home for either the alt-ed programs, or be able, a way to free up some additional full-size classrooms if that were to be able to happen. What we do see, though, is an opportunity, even though, you know, you're pretty well utilized, there is a discontinuity there between schools that have space and don't have space. Being able to realign and be able to get some equilibrium with space there going forward, where everybody had the same complement of resource rooms and specials would probably be key, and that as well as gaining some better efficiency there. However, you know, the redistricting is not a magic, it's not one size fits all, based on the size of the schools, it may not work, but it's something that may be worthwhile to take a deeper look at. That wraps up our initial take, hopefully. I didn't go too far over a half hour, but we'd like to turn it over to the board for any questions they may have on anything we presented tonight.
Do you have any other questions?
I have a lot of questions. Let's start with just some suppositions to make sure we're wrong. You said forty-four percent of the units are rented for the housing units. Is that for school-aged children, or is that for town total?
Town total. Forty-four percent of your housing stock is rental units?
Right.
Whether or not they're all rented out, or I don't know what your vacancy rate is.
Right, but are they for school-aged children? Is there any way we could drill down and figure out that there are school-aged children in those rental units?
Let me look into that.
I didn't expect an answer now, but, because that leads to my next point of the transits. You know, and it seems very, very high, forty-four percent rental units in the town such as Vernon. So we're seeing transient populations between schools and between in and out of district. Is there any way that you can do a follow-up with the number of students who transfer? We can get you the data in district, but...
I actually think we have that. What we've done in other communities that have had questions on transient students is, if we have the state ID, what we'll do is, we'll look at students that are in first through twelfth grade this year, and see if they were in K through eleventh last year, and if they weren't, then we know that they were new to the system.
Because I think that would be helpful to the board, knowing the transient population, because I think we're not taking that into account when we do budgetary resources, et cetera.
Yeah, one thing, just to bear with me, one thing that really popped out to me, we do an estimate of migration as part of our projections, and you have a very, very high estimate of migration. I mean, much higher than I've seen in many similar communities. As high as almost five, or four, or five, or almost six percent. That leads me to believe that you have a lot of movement of student sum, and that's only looking at first through seventh versus two through eighth the next year. So within pretty stable grades, you have a lot of movement. So that leads me to believe that'd be much higher when you look at all the grades.
Then the other thing is the percentage of students who are attending non-public school, and I mean the magnet schools, private schools, et cetera. You know, I'm coming up with a figure of about twelve and a half percent current. You know, and that's taking four hundred and fifty students, dividing by three thousand two hundred and a half. However, in your projections, we're saying that there's a birth grade of, let's say, three forty, but incoming K is only going to be two fifty. Is that due to migration, or is that due to people choosing something other than the Vernon public schools? And the reason I'm asking that, it goes back to the previous question, is, you know, what are we supposed to be budgeting for? Is it a transient problem, or is it a problem that they're going out to other public schools, not Vernon public schools? not Vernon public schools?
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll take a look at your other public for kindergarten and take a look at that trend over the last eight years to see how it's increased. My guess, just based on the data points we have for the chart on Slide 21, is that you are losing a fair amount of kindergartens, because if they're accepting 31 pre-K, most likely in the correct schools, they're most likely going to stay there for kindergarten.
All right, thank you.
One of the last slides, you were referring to programs currently in the building. And Slide 39. The projected enrollments would require taking away space from current programming in buildings. Which programs were you focusing on?
We were taking a look at the alternate ed programs in the high school building for both the K-8 and the 912, saying if you were to be able to get back all of the building and have it dedicated to only a high school function, would then maybe make some sense to be able to move a grade up, but we didn't get into, go through the whole process of finding additional space to house those programs. They are taking up full-size classrooms, which leads to capacity, leads to space in the building. And it was our understanding from our initial discussions that they were there because there was excess space at the high school. So if you want to be able to utilize that space through moving a grade up, you would have to, you know, find a home for it.
Did you look at any modeling of the sort, the origin of the children? I noticed way back on one side you had a scattergram on page 25 where the students originate, and did you do any manipulation of where they might end up otherwise than they do at present?
We only track them on October 1st of every given year. What we can do is take a look at this year versus, say, five years ago and see if the density of students changed from where they're at, but we don't go through the act of, you know, tracking a student throughout their entire experience in the Vernon school system, see how many houses, different houses they live in. That's not something we'd be able to do. Is that what you were asking?
Well, basically, you've got one elementary school, 131% of capacity, and if you change their map up a little bit, would that fix that situation?
Yeah, you would, yeah, that would be to go through redistricting. We didn't go through redistricting without someone giving us the direction to say, why don't we look at redistricting? We do have in our scope to be able to look at some options, but that would be one of the logical choices, would be to look at Northeast and be able to realize that we would have to be able to move some students most likely into Center Road, and move some students from Center Road most likely into Lake Street or Skinner Road to be able to utilize some space down in Lake Street. So there would be several moves to be able to free up enough space at Northeast. One of the questions we had was there was clearly either redistricting or some sort of balancing going on a number of years ago. We were just wondering how long ago that happened, whether if it was captured in our last 10 years of numbers, or if it was something that predated that.
You mentioned child, women that is childbearing. How, are you collecting the data because of...
We use the US Census. We have the number of women by different age groups, and we use the ages of 18 to 44 to be able to say these are females of childbearing age for a population like Vernon, and then identify where those areas are based on whoever filled out the census form in 2010. What that does is that gives us an idea of areas that we would maybe expect some higher birth rates in the near future, especially if it's on the lower end of that, and provided they're not a transient population. But what it does is it really informs, once we get the live births, where we're showing on this map now, all the little dots are Vernon public schools, elementary school students, we're going to know the births over the last decade, in particular, the last five, so that gives us a good indication of where future kindergarteners are going to actually be in town. Yeah, it's just a little bit of an arduous process to go through with the state to be able to get that data. We're still in the paperwork phase of it right now.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? A lot of information to absorb.
I understand.
So what would be our next steps with the feasibility study? You would come back after a certain period of time with final recommendations?
Yeah, what we were thinking is for the board, the administration to have some discussion, we know we gave you guys way too much stuff for you to possibly absorb in a half hour tonight, to be able to look at some of the data, look at in particular the projections and the utilization, and then give us a charge of what we should be focusing on for some potential options that would be palatable, would be very interested in for Vernon to be able to take a look at whether it would work or not, and then our homework would be to be able to test those out and get back to you and let you know that if these are viable options, then weigh in on which of those would be more highly recommended than others.
And we could identify the sensitivities of the community with regard to those options for you as well, what research supports them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out to see me and sharing help with some information with us and doing the work and referred results.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and any suggestions you have for a happy holiday as well.
Hey, so now we'll watch the consent agenda. First, before we take a motion, is there a poll of the items on the consent agenda? To one in the middle, in our folders, there was additional information on the trip to Las Vegas for the Home Builders Association, has an additional donation. Anyone want to pull anything else, Mrs. Russell? Item G? 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 Okay, anyone else? Okay, then I will entertain a motion for A, B, C, D, E. Anyone want to make that motion, Mr. Kent?
Move that the Vernon Board of Education approve the items listed on the consent agenda minus those pulled.
Is there a second? Mrs. Russell? All those in favor?
Can I? I said I, I meant E.
You meant E?
Yeah.
Okay. So will you amend your motion? You said it right. What's that called?
The only item pulled is, I understand it is item E.
E and G.
G. It's hard to hear.
So the motion is to approve items A, B, C, D, and F. Okay, everyone, okay, all those in favor? Janus. Thank you. Now, item E.
Thank you, through the chair. This is regarding the ability to have outsource suspensions for students in grades K, 1, or 2. Is this a required addition? Is this for something specific?
No, I'm sorry. Through the chair, this is now required by state law from the last legislative session, so we received an update in August, we're just making it into a policy. So no students in grades K, 1, or 2 can be suspended out of school or expelled, but there are three exceptions that are in policy.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Someone want to make a motion to approve item E?
I move approval of item E.
Is there a second? Any discussion or comments? All those in favor? Janus. Now we have item G.
My question is actually just about the title. On the page, it says alcohol use drugs and tobacco, including and performance-enhancing substances. Should that be saying, including and?
What page is that?
It's actually on every page of the alcohol use drug.
No, what, you, that?
A packet?
Yeah.
I'm looking at 43.
Okay.
But it starts a few before that. It's just a title.
I think the "and" is not supposed to be there, but I think that's just a title.
Yeah.
The "and" should be there.
"And" should be out there.
That's a title. Right? All those, do we have a motion to approve that?
Can I ask one other question about this policy? Just again, on page 46, where detailing inhalants defined but not limited to, does that list ever get updated? I mean, is that something that's just carried forward?
So, through the chair. We're interpreting that nicotine-based vehicles, for lack of a better term, are all under this policy. So, you know, with all the vapor rubs and what they're doing, we're just saying, we put that in there so that it can be understood that it's always going to be under the tobacco policy.
We're looking at the same thing. I'm talking about like the nitrous oxide, the nitrate. It's page 510 of the policy, and it's number page 46 of that.
I apologize.
That's why they have but not limited to, because it's do come up, though.
I didn't know how often they actually review this list that, I mean, aren't these old substances? Do you know what I mean? Like, do we ever remove anything from this list, or does it just keep growing?
The list keeps growing, because, I mean, you don't want to limit it. I mean, unfortunately, they do some of this, you know, whether it's an aerosol can, et cetera, but there's always coming up with new ways and things that, that's why we put it in there. It just grows, unfortunately.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion to approve item G? Self-major, and is there a second? Mrs. Russell? Any further discussion? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Janus, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 3.0, Secretary's Report. Opportunity for Board of Education to add or delete urgent agenda items. Anything to add or delete? I'm moving on to item 3.2, Rockland High School Student Representative. Brittany, welcome.
Lately, RHS has been into some interesting things. Just last month was Mr. RHS, which is a competition for male students to enter in, where they are judged in four different categories, and the winner is declared Mr. RHS. There is a gift card drive going on during lunch waves where students can donate gift cards, gift cards, as well as food to the people who are less fortunate this season. Winter sports have started, and basketball is in full plow for boys and girls. We're all rooting that they make it to States and go far. Along with that, we have a toy drive also taking place, and the VoAG department also put on a holiday night, December 4th, where the department sells wreaths, tabletop trees, and poinsettias, all of which the students help to grow and assemble, and students and classes were allowed to sell their products to make profit. The VoAG department also had a Red Robin fundraiser December 10th, and we are having another in February.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions with Brittany? Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate your report. We'll move on to item 4.0, Community Forum. This is an opportunity for comments on agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the board from citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Carol Shutterin, and this is my husband, Tim Shutterin.
I'm going to use the microphone now, I'm sorry.
I'm Carol Shutterin, and this is my husband, Tim Shutterin. We live at 167 Warren Avenue. We just moved there. Our daughter walks about a quarter mile down an incredibly narrow road to get the bus, and people generally drive between 40 and 50 miles per hour down the road, and it's not very safe for her to walk there. Three middle school buses drive right past our house, and we were hoping to have the bus pick her up at the end of the driveway, since the bus drives right past our house.
Can you give me your address again? I'm sorry.
167 Warren Avenue. I spoke to a woman named Diane at the bus company. She agreed that the road was very narrow and dangerous. I also spoke to several police officers on the Vernon Police, and they also agree that it was very dangerous for Margaret to walk by herself, and that I should come and address it to you.
Did you, I'm sorry to ask you a question again. What grade is your child in?
8th grade.
8th grade. And did you contact anybody in the business department, transportation, anybody in the Vernon public school?
I tried to fill out a form on your website. Is it possible to fill out? The first page asks for your phone number. It will not let you fill in your phone number, and then it will not let you proceed to the next page.
Can I recommend that you call my office tomorrow morning, and we'll look into this?
Sure. I know that you've spoken to my husband on the phone one time, Tim Shutterin.
Yeah.
He was on a roof when you called.
Sorry. Okay.
And, yes.
All right, we will look at it tomorrow from a safety perspective.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening? Okay, we will move on to Personnel 5.1, Memorandum of Understanding Vernon School Administrators' Association. Mr. Kent?
Okay, I'm going to move that the Board of Education go into executive session to discuss negotiations and invite the superintendent to attend.
Well, don't we have to do this before we... All right, anybody have any questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous. We do need to go into executive session now, but it will be hopefully short. I may ask these formal questions. Yeah, Mrs. Russell?
I move that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding between the Vernon School Administrators and the Vernon Board of Education, as discussed in executive session.
Thank you. Is there a second, Mrs. Aron? Any further discussion or comments, concerns? All those in favor? Janus. Now we move on to item 5.2.
I move that the Vernon Board of Education approve the appointment of Karen Joan Rorrio as Director of Pupil Personal Services. Appreciate a second.
Mrs. Gessay. Okay, any questions? Comments? Concerns? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much. Any concerns? Item 5.3. Mrs. Ar.
I move the Board of Education approve Sarah Brunner's request for earn H, extend child learning leave from January 4, 2016, to the end of the 2015-16 school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions, comments? Mrs. Russell?
When, if we, if she return in the same position, she just have a job.
According, through the chair, according to the union contract, she will have a position, but it won't be the position in that that she currently has in place.
So I'd like to know how the students would be taught now? Is it a full-time substitute in the year?
So through the chair, it's a full-time, long-term substitute who's already in place. That teacher will just continue throughout the school year, so there'll be no disconnect for the students.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the extended child learning leave? Miss Janice, Misses Carers, thank you. Instructional coaching's fall update.
Good evening.
Could you identify yourself for everybody to, since we have three people? That was part of our presentation.
All right, good evening. So tonight we're going to share our fall instructional coaching update with you and because we do have some new Board of Ed members, we would like to introduce ourselves. My name is Jenny Fisher. This is my fifteenth year of teaching in Vernon. I started off as a special education teacher, then was a fourth and fifth grade classroom teacher at Skinner Road School and then Lake Street School and we are now, Paula and I, coming up on our fifth year of instructional coaching in Vernon.
And I'm Paula Hughes and as Jenny just said, we are in our fifth year of instructional coaching. Prior to that, I was a teacher at Skinner Road School for twelve years, primarily in third grade, although I taught one year in second and one year in fourth.
My name is Allison Sinacola. I've been employed by the Vernon Board of Education for the last eighteen years. I've had a variety of teaching roles. I've taught elementary special education as well as second grade and fifth grade. I have educated children at Lake Street School as well as Center Road before becoming an instructional coach this past November. We just wanted to point out, if you take a minute to notice or to think about our backgrounds, we have fifty years of accumulated service in the town of Vernon, between the three of us. In addition, between being special education and classroom teachers, we collectively have experience teaching all elementary grade levels K through five. So why coaching? What is our role? Well, an instructional coach is someone whose chief professional responsibility is to bring evidence-based practices into classrooms by working with teachers and other school leaders. So during our presentation, we're going to highlight and weave throughout four high-leverage practices, referenced from Jim Knight's instructional coaching, the instructional coaching guru of the country, that have the greatest impact in terms of effect on teaching and learning. And they are classroom management, content, instructional practices, and assessment for learning. Before we go into our initiatives in the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen first trimester, we wanted to highlight some of the major accomplishments that we've had in the past four and a half years of instructional coaching. When we first began coaching, Jenny and I and the other coaches at that time worked with grade level teachers to put together what we called implementation guides at that point in time for both reading and writing. We organized the Common Core standards into six units for each grade. We wrote a scope and sequence of teaching objectives and we had lesson plans and resources available for each of those units. Last year, those of us that were in place took that information and we put together a more formalized curriculum using those documents plus adding course descriptions, objectives, essential focus questions, and skills and processes that students would need to learn by the end of that grade and the end of that unit. The second item is, we consider one of our major accomplishments, is to bring, bringing the workshop model to Vernon for reading, writing, and math. It's an approach that is much less teacher-directed. It requires less explicit whole group instruction of teachers and provides a lot more student-independent activity time. It gives students the time to read and write independently at their own developmental level. It is a much more student-directed approach to learning. It gives teachers the time to differentiate their instruction by working with students individually and in small groups based on their needs. And research shows that the old one-size-fits-all, that everyone's reading and writing the same type of material and books and writing prompts, that doesn't work. So, three of us have all, over the years, developed our knowledge of the workshop model. We've attended lots of trainings put on by Columbia Teachers College in New York. They have Saturday reunions with various workshops at all the different grade levels. There's summer reading institutes and we were involved in the summer reading institute when we came here because in order for us to bring that workshop model to Vernon, we needed to be educated in the model ourselves in order to be effective coaches. We also created a Structures for Learning document that had all the English language arts components of the Reader's and Writers Workshop. Finally, a third major accomplishment is the New Teacher Academy that we started last year. The teacher induction program that we had in the past wasn't as extensive as we felt that it should have been. We implemented this program last year as a way to build and to maintain high-quality teachers to become the future leaders of the Vernon Public School System. So now that I've highlighted some of the things that we've done up until this year, now we would like to discuss what our initiatives have been for the first trimester of this year. I would be talking very shortly about New Teacher Academy, both last year and this year. And then Allison's going to talk about our role as coaches in facilitating professional learning. And Jenny's going to talk about ongoing coaching in the schools. So for New Teacher Academy, as I said, we started it last year and it includes all brand-new year-one and year-two teachers for grades pre-K to twelve. This year, we have eleven brand-new teachers participating in New Teacher Academy, but we also have last year's new teachers who are year-two cohorts and there's nine teachers in that group. So the focus in the year-one teachers is on the classroom environment, the domain one and the Common Core of Teaching Rubric. It's the area where those first-year teachers are evaluated. And then for year-two teachers, our focus is more on instruction, which is domain three of the Common Core Teaching Rubric and it's based on the instruction in the classroom. For New Teacher Academy, we use a three-pronged approach. We start off before school even starts by providing a two-day summer workshop for brand-new teachers. And then we have monthly New Teacher Academy meetings for both secondary and primary teachers. And finally, our embedded professional development of going into new teachers' classrooms and coaching in their classroom. So I was just going to talk a little bit about that two-day summer workshop. It's before school begins, about a week before school begins, for two days. We get the brand-new teachers together and we provide them with a lot of resources and information to help them establish a positive classroom environment, which again is that Common Core Domain one. And it's so important to have that solid classroom environment for the success of the rest of the school year and the rest of your career. We provide them with two very, this is a very classic resource, First Days of School by Harry Rosemary Wong. I think we all received a copy of this when we started and for the first several years, I kept consulting this book and some of the chapters that are critical to teaching, why you need to succeed on the first days of school, why is an effective teacher, how you can be a happy first-year teacher, how to close a student achievement gap, and why you should use proven, research-based practices. Another book that they came out with last year that we also provided to the teachers is this Classroom Management book, which has fifty procedures where it talks about how to develop the procedures, how to review and practice the procedures in your classroom. We start off the summer workshop by also discussing the importance of building relationships with students and establishing the connections and building that rapport and how that is so critical and carries throughout the whole year of developing that classroom environment and learning community. We go over establishing routines and procedures so that anything from knowing how to sharpen a pencil, when, where they use the bathroom, how to hand in homework, how to transition to different activities, if they establish those routines and procedures early on in the classroom in the school year, that classroom will be a well-oiled machine so that students can function independently in the classroom. We help them develop behavior management plans so they have just a few real critical rules that are stated positively and clearly and so the students know what the expectations are and then the positive and negative consequences of following or not following those rules. Prior to school starting, some of the new teachers even asked us to come into their classrooms to take a look at their classroom setup, their desks, where the bulletin boards are, where their gathering area is for workshop just to make sure that they have the right flow. And so all these things over that two-day period really gets the teachers ready to roll and the students come in on that first day. The second prong of New Teacher Academy is those monthly meetings that we have. And so, we actually have four sessions. We have secondary teachers come for an hour and then we have primary teachers come for an hour and within both of those groups, there's year-one and year-two teachers. So, we always talk about the importance of differentiating for teachers to differentiate for their students. Well, now we have to differentiate for those different groups of new teachers. So, for the year-one, as I said, we focus on classroom environment. And year-two, we've been actually asking year-two teachers what they need to help them with their instruction and responding to the needs of those teachers. We had Tajee and Santi come and speak about the special education process to all teachers. And then we had a follow-up meeting for just the special education teachers of how to write an individualized education program or IEP. Jason Magle will be coming tomorrow. We have a New Teacher Academy maybe tomorrow. He's going to talk about the teacher evaluation process. Last month, we had some teachers that had had their formal evaluation and they had some questions about what their evaluators were looking for in the classroom. So he's going to go over the CCT rubric and talk about the characteristics of the different domains and what the their evaluators must, will be looking for for evidence so they can have a better understanding of that process. We provide teachers a lot of times at those meetings with other professional readings that will support some of the issues that they're having. But probably one of the most critical components of the monthly meetings are those conversations that new teachers have. They've said in the past that that time is valuable for them to talk about issues that they're having and they have that cohort to share ideas and come up with solutions to some of the problems that they're having in their classroom. And finally, I'm not going to talk a lot about this because Jenny's going to go into it in a little while, but the third prong of our New Teacher Academy is basically in-class coaching. We devote the month of September to go into new teachers' classrooms and based on feedback that we got from last year's new teachers, they said the cycle of observation where we just go in and take a look at the room and take a look at the routines and procedures and the management plan and provide them with feedback was the most beneficial thing to them last year. So we continue to do that. We also help people, teachers, make teachers understand the curriculum, help plan lessons and model and co-teach lessons. Again, Jenny will go into that a little bit more in-depth later. And so now I'm going to turn the presentation over to Allison, who's going to talk about the coaching role in facilitating professional learning. So one of the many roles and responsibilities of an instructional coach is to be a strong learning facilitator. It's so important that we're able to collaborate with others to plan, design, and facilitate job-embedded, standards-based professional learning for teachers. Teachers in Vernon are provided with several half-days as well as full-days to engage in professional learning throughout the year. It is during this time that we can train teachers on new instructional strategies or refine existing instructional strategies. Coaches also serve as members as a PDA committee or the Professional Development and Evaluation Committee. This committee actually plans for the job-embedded professional learning of the staff and the teachers. It is here that we can plan workshops that will differentiate for the learning needs also of teachers. A main focus of professional development is put on how we can actually increase the quality and effectiveness of classroom instruction so that our students can be successful to meet their academic goals. The November third professional development was an innovative way to meet the variety instructional needs of our teachers in the district K to twelve. At the end of the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen academic school year, teachers were surveyed about what they felt like they needed to be a more successful teacher in the classroom. So the coaches worked very collaboratively with the Assistant Superintendent of Schools and the Director of Teaching and Learning to analyze those results to determine how we could best meet the teachers' professional needs. So we decided to plan a differentiated menu of options where teachers could actually choose the workshops that they needed to help improve their instruction in the classroom. We wanted to make the workshops actionable where the teachers could develop their capacity immediately and then use the, and use the learned strategies in the classroom as close as the next day. Each coach was unpaired with several teachers throughout the district to help facilitate the workshops. This was a way to create partnerships with the teachers from across the district as well as to build their capacity that they could also bring back to their schools. After analyzing the results, we noticed a pattern in the teachers' responses at the elementary level. Many teachers wanted to be able to develop and improve their individualized and small-group instruction during the reading workshop. So the coaches facilitated three different reading workshops. Jenny facilitated a guided reading workshop that focused on grades two, three and she gave all of, everyone who came to her workshop a book by Jen Richardson, The Next Steps in Guided Reading. So everyone walked out of the workshop with their very own copy. And then Paula and I focused on implementing reading comprehension strategies in the classroom. We used the Reading Strategies Book by Jen Saravalo. So also, every teacher who came to the workshop left with a copy of this. And we decided to kind of break up the focus. Paula focused on the K-two teachers and I focused on grades three through eight. Having a focus on three through eight was great because we had a cross between the elementary and the middle school teachers. So really what that allowed for was teachers to talk about the learning progressions from third grade through eight. And especially, there was a lot of fifth-grade teachers talking with the middle school teachers about, you know, the difference in learning and reading and what they saw the fifth graders coming in and it was nice for fifth-grade teachers to have the conversation with sixth-grade teachers about what are you looking for in the classroom. So it was very meaningful. Really, the goal of the reading workshop is to make sure that students are actively reading and applying their comprehension strategies. The goal of providing teachers with the Richardson's book was so that we could learn how to provide powerful reading instruction to students at each individual student's instructional level. The workshop instructed teachers on how guided reading had a clear instructional focus where they could prompt students to use a reading strategy when they encountered some difficulty. They were also taught that you could teach higher-level comprehension strategies as well as expand students' sight words, decoding skills, fluency, and vocabulary. Maple Street School actually used this book last year as an initiative to improve their reading instruction in the classroom. And based off of their success, we decided that it was important to share it with the district as a whole so that people could implement guided reading into their classrooms. The Reading Strategies Book was a way to provide teachers with a menu of reading strategies that they could use either during small group or individualized reading instruction. We worked on how to develop reading goals for all readers so that they could move their reading comprehension ahead. We worked on how to provide students with step-by-step strategies for skilled reading and also how to adjust instruction to meet the individual needs of students when they were having some difficulty. So we took a few pictures during our workshops that we just wanted to show. You know, here, teachers are working collaboratively to have meaningful conversations about how they could use the Reading Strategies Book in their classroom. This picture shows teachers also, again, collaborating and they were working on aligning lessons to the Common Core and the current reading curriculum by grade levels. Here, teachers are making their learning actionable by creating charts that they could use in their classroom immediately during their reading lessons. And the book stresses the importance of providing students with a visual so that they can create a mental picture in their mind. This helps the students to kind of remember and to recall the strategy. And when we teach students how to use the charts, it also promotes independent thinking and learning on their own. Many teachers also turn their charts into a bookmark for students to keep them next, right next to them as they're reading. And then, once they have that bookmark, they can add it to their, as we call it, reading toolkit and then they can refer back to it over the course of the year if they are having difficulty on that skill later on. The nice thing about this workshop was we really created a professional learning community where we brought teachers together from across the district, shared resources and strategies with one another. And then the teachers began sharing their resources and strategies with their school and with their, you know, with the other teachers in their building who did not come to the workshop. As teachers have continued to create lessons, they've actually been emailing them to me and then I have then in turn been emailing them. And then, I have then in turn been emailing them back to the original committee of teachers. And then, they have been sharing them with their, you know, during grade-level meetings. So, just really nice to see that, you know, teachers working together and collaboratively. And just kind of the last thing, at the end of the workshop, we asked the teachers how they were going to apply their new learning from the day into their classroom. So, just this was some feedback that teachers wrote, but just to kind of highlight, you know, teachers said that they were going to collaborate across subject areas. The goal here was not only to improve reading, but also to help improve writing. You know, differentiation in the classroom to move the students ahead academically was also a huge focus. A great one was collaboration across subject areas which would lead to student achievement. So, not only looking at reading and writing, but also bringing in social studies and the science background. The ability to meet the visual needs of students, which sometimes we're so focused on talking, we forget that kids learn, you know, through models and pictures and visuals. And then, to align our instruction to the curriculum and the Common Core. So, now Jenny's actually going to talk about how we use coaching in our schools, our current model.
So, first, just going to go over a little bit of logistics of what coaching looks like. So, every day, you know, we just talked about New Teacher Academy and we talked about professional learning. But on a day-to-day basis, what is it that we actually do? So, as stated previously, the month of September, we devote to coaching new teachers. So, as Paula, I think, had mentioned, there are 20 new teachers from year one, year two. And so, what we would do is we would go into the, to the classrooms and look for evidence of those learnings that took place over the summer, the teachings. And then, we'd be able to observe and provide these teachers with some feedback. So, I'm just going to back up a little bit though. And I just wanted to talk about how we're in the schools Monday through Thursday. And on Fridays, the coaches come back and we're at central office for the day. And on Fridays, we're able to do a little bit more with curriculum and assessment. We have meetings with Jason Mago, Director of Teaching and Learning. We might be meeting with the reading teams. So, there's various things happening. So, Monday through Thursday, we're in the schools and Fridays, we're at central office. So, currently, Paula has been in Center Road School for the month starting in October through now. And I've been housed at Maple Street School. So, we're in those schools respectively, Monday through Thursday. And Ally has just joined me at Maple Street. And as we look forward to the new year, I'm going to continue at Maple Street School. Paula will be heading to Lake Street School and Ally will be at Skinner Road School. So, why do we devote September to new teachers? That's a great question. You may or may not know this, but the top two reasons that teachers are leaving our profession right now, particularly new teachers, is due to a lack of support and as well as student discipline. So, in Vernon, we decided we want to be proactive instead of reactive. So, what can we put in place to make sure that our teachers have the support that they need so that they want to stay? We need to make sure, it is so crucial, especially in those schools of high needs. It's even more prevalent to see teachers leaving and we want them to stay. We want that longevity because then they're really able to learn the curriculum. They are able to collaborate with their peers. And so, if we can provide that system for them where they have that lifeline and it's not just a sink-or-swim when you get into the classroom, we find that's going to be extremely beneficial and we're going to reap the benefits of that in the long run. So, New Teacher Academy is one way that we can try to accomplish this. So, we're constantly trying to build a community of learners. That was like our big focus for new teachers this year. And it's not only building a community of learners for the teachers among themselves so they have each other to lean on, but then we also want them to transfer that knowledge to their own classrooms in building a community of learners. So, for the first month of school, we visited these classrooms. And we would observe focusing on the classroom environment, which is domain one, which is what all new teachers are evaluated on for the first half of the year. So, by front-loading and providing them that information, beginning of the year, that's what they're going to be evaluated on. They feel more supported and understand, they just have a better idea of, okay, when the administrator comes into my classroom, exactly what are they looking for? And we're providing them with those supports. We know that classroom management is a, is, that lays the foundation for the rest of the year. So, if we can get our new teachers to be really strong management-wise, they're going to be able to maximize the instructional time in their classroom. Without a well-managed classroom, it is very difficult to teach and it's very difficult to reach all the learners. So, we want to make sure we're laying that foundation right from the get-go, which is why in turn, September, we're really focusing. We're getting in there. Oftentimes, teachers, whether they're starting, they're, you know, very enthusiastic and excited and they might come up with this really complex management plan. There was one time in the end of, not this year, but the previous year, a teacher was talking about what her management plan looked like. And you could tell she had spent so many hours really thinking of it. She said, "We're going to have small, small cotton balls and medium-sized cotton balls and large cotton balls. And depending on what you do, you're going to earn a small cotton ball and then the large." And so, just by having a conversation and we said, "Well, do you think this is going to be manageable for you? Do you think that your students are really going to understand what is being asked of them and how they can earn one? Or what happens if, you know, a negative consequence?" "Yes, yes, I think so, you know, definitely." And when we went into the classrooms and we observed, it was clear that the students, they weren't really sure what earned them the different-sized cotton balls. And the teacher herself was saying, "You know what? This is not really manageable. It looked great on paper, but it's not really working." So, part of our job is to sit down together and we were able to kind of streamline her management plan and really focus it so that it was manageable because we want them to be successful. Sometimes, we have teachers that ask us to come in and another thing that they want us to look at is, you know, "Can you take a look at my positive to negative student interaction ratio?" So, we talked about New Teacher Academy that we really want to see that five to one, five positives to one negative. And when you're in the classroom and you're teaching, you don't really, it's hard to keep track of that. You think you're, "Oh yeah, I have five to one." But when you go in and you actually tally that data and then you can sit down and talk about it with them and it's eye-opening. And then, you can brainstorm different strategies and ways to increase that positivity to the negative ratio. That's where that real learning is taking place. So, as stated earlier, Paula was housed at Center Road from October to the present. And I've been housed at Maple Street and Ally just came aboard. And then, we just want to point out something to notice, that 30% of the teachers right now at Center Road School are either new to teaching or new to their grade level. And 50% of the teachers at Maple Street School right now are either new to the grade level or new to teaching. So, it is crucial that we have something in place to support these teachers. There's two grade levels right now at Maple Street where 100% of the teachers are brand-new, brand-new to the grade level. That is really hard for teachers. They don't have someone to lean on and to reference and try to understand the curriculum and the standards and what things mean. So, we are able to kind of provide that for them. And we can sit down and really talk about and look at a unit of study and what is being asked for the students. Because if the teacher doesn't understand it, then they can't teach it to the students. So, that's the bulk of really what we do in our job is really trying to help develop the teacher's understanding. We have these new Common Core State Standards. We can read them on paper, but really trying to interpret and understand them at the level they're meant to be. We talked about that word breaker. What does it going to look like? That's very abstract for teachers. So, we're trying to break it down for them and what does that actually look like? So, I just kind of wanted to highlight an example of a coaching cycle that we might go through. So, this is in addition to other things, little bits and pieces of coaching. But if we're in a coaching cycle with, with teachers, this is kind of what it looks like. At the beginning of our time, starting at a school, we'll sit down with the building principal. We kind of collaborate together. We're able to hear what the building initiatives might be, what the school focus is because we want to make sure that we're supporting anything that's happening in the school with the principal as well. From there, the principal might say, "These are my, some areas of focus." And once we kind of are provided with that information, that's where our coaching really begins. So, this year, one of our coaching cycles, and we have typically single, at the same time, there's multiple coaching cycles going on. So, this is just one example in one content area for writing that I wanted to highlight for you. So, I had mentioned before, both teachers new to the grade level. So, we took a look at a writing unit that they were about to embark on. So, the first thing we do is we sit down and we read and understood what the Common, what the Common Core State Standards that were being addressed in this unit. First and foremost, we would take a look at a piece of writing that would meet the expectations at the end of a unit for that grade level. We were able to look at annotated pieces. We would do this while also looking at the rubric which addresses the standards and really going by bit by bit, what are the expectations for the students in this grade level at the end of the unit? Once we had that understanding, the teachers then decided, "You know what? We want to know where our students are right now. So, we're going to give them an on-demand pre-assessment." So, the teachers went, they provided that on-demand writing assessment and we came back together. We were able to look at the, the writing and gather some baseline data. They wanted to know, "Where are my students?" At this particular, they noticed that many of the students were, their writing was about two grade levels below. So, we knew we needed to really, how are we going to make this a rigorous enough unit while still addressing where they're starting from? There was an informational writing unit. Many of the students weren't writing in paragraph form. They did not have any ideas and details. So, immediately, we said, "Okay, whatever we're teaching, we really focus in on that organization and structure." So, all our lessons kind of went back to that organization and structure. We, we addressed many other things too, but that was like something that we knew we had to really hammer home. Once we did that, we were able to plan out a series of lessons together. So, we looked at, okay, we have this many days of teaching. What is that going to look like? So, we planned out some lessons and then from there, I was able to go in and model a lesson for the teacher. The most important part about modeling the lesson is that the teachers get to see it, but then we get to sit down and debrief and talk about it. So, we can talk about, "What did you notice? What questions do you have?" And then, following that, we would then go in and observe the teacher teaching a lesson. Again, the most important part, sitting back down together, that feedback, the debriefing, really taking a look at the student's writing. Going in again, we continue with that cycle. Sometimes, we model again. Sometimes, it's co-teaching. Sometimes, it's just observing. But now, the focus now really starts to be on the student work that's themselves. So, we take the student writing that afternoon. We're dividing them into piles, trying to figure out where the students are. What are they understanding? We're modifying our plan that we set from the beginning in order to address where the students currently are. So, there's a lot of working pieces when we're coaching. And, you know, we found that sometimes we start with, the structures are in place for the delivery of instructions to take place. So, this particular class, the students were able to write for about five minutes before they started to stop. So, we really needed to put structures in place to build their stamina. Because we know if the students aren't reading and writing, they're not going to improve. As we went further into the unit, it was things like, "How do I sit down and take a look at this piece of writing and identify where the student is right now so I know where to push them next? How do I sit down next to a writer in the midst of it and look at their writing and teach them something in that moment that they can take with them?" And all of this is about, it's just using this formative assessment to gear their instruction for the next day. Don't wait to look at your writing till the end of the week. Don't wait for five days. How can we use what they're doing every single day to inform you for the following day? So, that's an example of some coaching in the classroom and that cycle continues. And in fact, right now, I believe tomorrow, that class particularly are taking their post-assessment. So, maybe next time, we probably can share some pre and post data with you. So, the last thing we just wanted to highlight with you is the impact on teaching and learning that instructional coaching does have. So, executing effective behavior management plan increases the instructional time. We've mentioned that already. We want to maximize every second that we have with our students to close those gaps. But we need to make sure we have those effective management plans in place. We're developing teachers' understanding of the standards in curriculum increases the level of instructional rigor. If we aren't sure what something looks like that a standard is addressing, there's no way we can help have our students reach the level that we want them to be at. So, really digging in and understanding the standards. In fact, just the other day, the three of us were sitting down talking about a standard for a good 45 minutes and we were grappling with it and really trying to dig into it and try to understand what it means. So, then, we can, we have the time to do that research, then we bring that knowledge to the teachers because we know they are, their wheels are spinning all day long. Implementing research-based instructional strategies meets the needs of all the learners in the classroom. We are doing the research. We know what works. We're able to share that. We're able to collaborate with the teachers. They're able to share with us. And finally, utilizing those formative and summative assessments that drives our daily instruction. So, finally, we received some feedback from teachers that we've supported this past fall thus far. And we just highlighted a few phrases of importance. So, we just wanted to give you a moment to read through and... And finally, we just want to thank you for gathering, I don't think we've said this enough for the board, about the importance of instructional coaching. And just this year, we also wanted to express how we just feel there's such a positive momentum right now we feel in Vernon. It's been a pleasure working alongside Jason Mango, kind of being his, an extension of him, he likes to call us, as well as under the new leadership of Joe and Bob. So, we just hope we can continue with this positive momentum, but we feel like Vernon is heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I'm going to ask if anybody has any questions for you.
You're the chairman. First of all, thank you for the presentation. It was extremely informative. I think that coaches offer tremendous value to one school district. I have a couple of questions and I'd like to know how you define new teachers. New teachers right out of school, new teachers to the district?
Go ahead.
New teachers be anyone that hasn't finished their team. So, they may have come from another district. And as far as their induction process of being certified in the state of Connecticut and having to complete their team cycle, if they have not done that yet, then they are considered in New Teacher Academy or obviously, if they're brand-new, you know, brand-new teacher to the career.
So, it's typically, typically year one and year two teachers.
So, my question is this, how do you measure success with these teachers?
And that's a, that's something that we grapple with as well. I think what sometimes what's hard with, with coaching too, is that you can provide all the resources. You can go in and model, but the teacher really needs to own it. Has to be, they have to own it. They have to make those changes. So, when we, when, when you, when you're coaching someone and you see those practices being maintained and sustained in a classroom and they've really gravitated towards wanting to make those changes because they know it's what's in the best interest of the students, I think that's how we define success. We're hoping through time too, we'll start to see, I don't know, other areas to articulate that.
We also just, we were hoping to have some data to share with you tonight, especially from Jenny and I being at Maple Street, really working intensely with, you know, a couple of grade levels. Unfortunately, the end of, the units are ending right now. So, we have pre-assessment data, but we, their post-assessments are being given this week. So, we were hoping to come, be able to come back to show some pre-assessment and some post-assessment data, especially for reading and writing and math next time we present.
This is also, this year in coaching is our first time that we're being housed in the buildings so that we're there Monday through Thursday. And that has made a tremendous difference. Oftentimes, we'd be, we were housed up here and we would get pulled to do various other responsibilities. So, now that we are in the classrooms and we're in the schools Monday through Thursday, that's made a big difference. So, we really want to take a look, like Ally, Allison was saying, with the data now, which we weren't really previously able to do.
We have a lot of quantitative data, you know, from the, from the teacher feedback. And some of the things that we did by instituting the guided reading groups in the classes to some of the, the Fontana and Penelope reading benchmarks, seeing growth in those groups of students. I'm assuming that, you know, some of it is from us modeling for teachers, how to put that structure in place and meeting the needs of, of the students. Obviously, some of it is, you know, the hard work with the teachers as well and their... Obviously, some of it is, you know, the hard work with the teachers as well in their classroom. What we put in place, you know, obviously, it does improve student, teacher instruction, and which will have an influence on student achievement.
Thank you. And during the New Teacher Academy, where you're responding to their needs, what are some of those needs that they need help with?
We've talked to Jason Mango, because after our last meeting, we thought we had a clear focus going forward, and the year-two teachers kind of pulled us aside after and said, you know, we're being evaluated right now. We have all these administrators coming in, doing formal evaluations, doing quick walkthroughs. And they wanted to know more about that process and the process of getting feedback, because they also want to develop as a teacher. So, you know, the feedback is the most important part for them of how can they change? So you've seen this, now what can we do going forward? So we met with Jason, and we're like, well, can you come in and talk about, you know, the evaluations and how they're being scored and what, you know, administrators are looking for, so we can then help ourselves moving forward? So now we kind of put a hold on what we were doing to meet their needs of looking at, you know. We spent a lot of time on classroom management, and now kind of moving forward is, okay, what can we do, you know, to improve our instruction in the room?
There's a couple other examples. There were some teachers that were coming and saying that they, their classroom management plans were working for the majority of their students, but they had like, if you think of like an SRBI triangle, the top tip of the triangle with the top one or two students that were continuously misbehaving, they weren't sure how to address the needs of those students. So we found an article about breaking this cycle of student misbehavior for those really difficult students. And when something isn't working, to try to connect with them in a general way of what more they could do with behavior plans and contact at home, trying to determine if there's something else going on in those students' lives. Another area that teachers were asking about was providing effective feedback to their students, which we know is one of the most effective instructional strategies for growth. And so this was a book that we were able to give to second-year teachers. And they're in there more with their instruction domain. And so this book goes on to how to give effective feedback in reading, writing, and math at the various grade levels. So that was something that they requested as well.
My final question. Have we lost any new teachers in the last, in the recent past to classroom behavior issues or lack of support?
Should we address that?
We should not be, I'm sorry. Personality issue that we shouldn't be talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
In your coverage, I had noticed that you did not mention Northeast School coverage, so could you address that please? Your slide's up here, you showed who was...
Right, so at this point in time, we took a look a little bit at needs base too, kind of looking at some data that we have. So at this point in time, we're trying to get into the schools immediately, where the data is kind of showing they could use some additional support.
Also the schools where there was a lot of new teachers, or new teachers at different grade levels. And Northeast fell a little bit lower on that. We will be going to Northeast School after our January, February cycle. With the, we're moving on to Lake Street Inn and Skinner Road next, and then Northeast will be next up.
What happens to the other teachers in other than first year and second year? I'm sure there's some struggling teachers somewhere along the line, what happens to them?
So the first and second-year teachers are just, they're part of New Teacher Academy. But when we're coaching in the schools, that's everyone. So Monday through Thursday, yep, we, right now, we're housed, we're focusing on one school at a time, because the longer we're there, we're, if you're able to see those changes a little bit more. But we, we work with all the teachers, no matter how many years' experience they have.
We've also communicated, if there is a teacher at a school that we're not resident in, that has, you know, really pressing need, they can email us, and we can find time in our schedules to meet the needs of those other struggling teachers. But they're not part of our rotation at that point.
I'm sorry, I may have already said this. New Teacher Academy is for K through five or K through twelve?
K through twelve.
Pre-K.
Pre-K.
Any other questions?
Thank you, through the chair. To the bottom line here is, classroom management is very important.
Yes.
I'm a former teacher, and I can shed some light on this because I have a degree in education. I went to college with a plan to go into education after college. And the two words that are gathered, mentioned in any college class for classroom management, not a single strategy, not a single topic of discussion, not a type of thing. And I'm sorry, colleges, back then, this is ten years ago, were just setting teachers up to fail. And until I got a copy of one of the Long's books, what a difference. I'm just so happy to see that there's now, you know, intentional effort going into this for new teachers, so thank you for that.
Anyone else have anything? Thank you so much for all the information, all the time it took you to put that presentation together.
Take care, we'll be seeing you again if you want.
Now, we have the update regarding professional development day activities held on November third.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'll be short and sweet. So the last time I was here, I gave you an update on how we started to think about professional development in Vernon, and how we did it collaboratively. So for those of you who were not here, we decided to do almost like a menu model. So we had, I would say, forty of our own presenters put on PD on that given day, as far as you heard what the lady said. But we also had some outside services, and so we did a whole menu of things. And I'm just going to go through with you real quick, how we did it electronically to monitor. And then we based a lot, or basing a lot of our PD going forward on the feedback that was given. So if you look at the monitor, I will show you, we sent out a Google form. And in this Google form, we had people sign up. So you could see names as they came up, and then it told you by school who had signed up. So we were able to keep track of it. So for this particular session, sorry, there's three hundred and eight people that signed up, including certified staff and paraeducators. It tells us the breakdown by session, and it also gave us an opportunity to make sure that we kept our numbers at something that was reasonable. So if you look at the AM session, and we realized, whoa, this is way too high, thirty-seven people in one room. But we also looked at the needs basis, and we said, Aspen webpages and Google Drive, K-12, we're going to need to run this again. This can't be a one-time thing. So this is something that we'll continue to offer, looking in February and looking in March, based on the feedback from people. Based on the feedback from staff, and I'll show you a little bit better what we did. So this gave us an idea of saying, okay, where do we need to put different things, if we needed to move them around, if they weren't in a room that was big enough? And then the PM session, same thing, if you look at the Aspen webpages again, people really were into that. And you know we've had a lot of technology infused into Vernon in the last few years, so it's good that people are learning how to use that as well. Smart Basic Training is using a smart board down here. So this gave us the whole breakdown, and then what it looked like before that, is if you view all responses, we were able to track who went to where. Who the teacher was, where they're from, what they chose. And then we said, okay, well, we want to know what you're going to do with it. So we had the evaluation form. They filled out what they did, but this isn't easy to read. So Karen Lipsky was excellent, she went through, and she actually disaggregated all the data. And we wanted to show people, so this is what we sent out to all the principals. This was their responses broken down. And then we sent it out to every presenter. This is your responses broken down. What does it look like? Well, it's a much easier form to read. During the session, this is what I attended, this is what I learned, as a result, I will. And then they got on the backside of it. In the future, so this was the piece right here. In future professional development, I would like to see the district call for training on. So we shared this with our PDAC committee, and this is what's driving our professional development going forward. We're saying, okay, what would you like to see? Then we're making decisions as a district and as schools and as a central office staff. We sit down and we say, okay, this is what we think we need, and this is what the data is telling us. And then we brought it to our PDAC committee, which we met last Thursday, and I believe there was about fifteen of us there, K-12. There was administrators, there was people from, you name it, from music to special education, to ELA, to the coaches behind me. We were all represented, so we said, okay, everybody's interested there, now let's start to build that. And so that's what we started to do. That was our first meeting. We broke into small, most professional learning communities and said, how are we going to build this? What are our technology needs? What are our advanced reading needs, or our advanced ELA needs? And that's how we're going to build it going forward, and that's what we're looking at right now for a model of full-day professional development. So that's really, it was well-received, and the biggest thing is giving people this feedback. They said, thank you, you know, I want to know how I did and how I presented. But having forty people who didn't know three weeks before that that they were actually going to be doing this, and people were excellent, they communicated well, we used Google Docs, so that we could go between buildings, make sure that it ran seamlessly. We get a lot of positive feedback, and then this is really what drives us. It's not us just going around saying, oh, that was really great. It was listening to the comments and listening to what people got out of different sessions. And we took part in it, a lot of administrators took part in it. Mr. Tessa and I, Mr. McCary were going around just to see, hear the conversations and see how things were going. But we're hoping to continue with that same model, and it was an overwhelming yes. When we talked to the PDAC committee on Thursday, is this the model you like? Something that we thought would work well, and it turned out it really did.
More comment. For years, the board, I think, understood the importance of PD and made a commitment to it. But for the first time, I'm hearing that it's relevant, and teachers are taking things away. You're asking what it is they want and need, and addressing those needs. So PD is really becoming what it should be. And I'm so glad to hear that there are takeaways, that they go back to the classroom and students benefit.
Absolutely.
I appreciate what you're, that you're listening, Jason, what you're providing as well.
It's excellent, the lady showed you some of the stuff. Our view, our vision is to have it actionable. So if you have PD today, then tomorrow, you've got to be able to put that in place in your teaching. And so that's what we've built, and we're going to continue to build that, and we're going to go based on interests and needs.
And without seven, I just have a question, are principals following up to see if the teachers are? Would they need to action what they're doing?
They are. Yeah, Mr. Tessa and I right now each go around to all eight principals. And so we have like conversations with them based on things, as far as the feedback and based on what we're looking for.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
We will move on to general business, and seven point one, follow-up from the athletic director. I mean, we have the information, and we've asked Lois and Kim to be here, but do you have any questions on the information that you were given?
I do, although it appears that questions that were asked were answered in the documentation, but it doesn't tie it all together for me. I don't understand. What I expected to see was more of what came in, what went out, what was purchased. Excesses, expenses, deficits, and how, but more importantly, how it relates to the budget going forward. We always address this in our budget deliberations, and there's nothing in the information provided that helps me understand what I should be looking for in the budget. In particular, I would ask for Dr. Masal. I was hoping to better understand the comments about the cost, that where did that money come from? How did she find it in her budget? I think, I think the dollar amount mentioned was twenty thousand dollars. And to find money like that is a double-edged sword, in my opinion. So I was hoping to better understand how those student activity funds are managed and spent as it applies to the impact that it has on the budget that the board works on. And I don't find any of that in here.
Just, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you're looking for a profit and loss on athletics? Almost like a profit and loss statement?
Yeah, I'd like to know what came in and what, and what of that was, went out, and then how it impacts our budgeting, our budget decision, yes. This, quite honestly, this didn't mean a whole lot to me.
Does anybody else have any? Mr. Porter.
Thank you, through the chair. I was also looking for some per-athlete spending, per-sport comparisons to similar districts. I don't see that anywhere.
Yes, through the chair. I guess it was a little confusing to me too. I'm just curious, how is the funding decided? And when I look at, for instance, like for girls and boys tennis? There seems to be tennis, for example, or volleyball, or volleyball, for example. I don't know how those numbers are derived. Am I making this up?
I'm sorry, I don't understand any of your...
So if you look at girls tennis? So there's per-athlete spending, there's six hundred and eight dollars per athlete. And if you look at boys tennis, there's three hundred ninety-nine dollars. So that's about a two-hundred-dollar difference? I'm just curious.
Because you have eleven students versus seventeen students. You're spending about the same.
Because the cost in tennis is just the transportation and transportation. So if you have more students, you're dividing, the cost is the same for girls and boys, but you're dividing it by more or less students, right, participants. Okay, so in terms of volleyball, same kind of situation? Girls volleyball, almost five hundred dollars per athlete. Boys, seven hundred and seventy. Because we have forty-six students as opposed to twenty-one. Yeah, and I do realize there's different numbers of students in each of those categories. I guess I was just looking at how this measured up, measures up in terms of athlete between the boys and the girls?
I don't see any title nine issues, if that's what you're asking for. I mean, the funding streams are similar, it's the denominator, the number of participants that change the per-spending per-athlete.
I mean, that makes, that makes sense.
So I mean, if you look at girls basketball versus boys basketball? Even though it's coming more per student, you have lots of participants.
Great, thank you. Is that all right? Is that clear?
Anybody else have any other questions and comments?
I guess, I guess, since my questions are answered, I would request through the superintendent that it would be helpful to me, I don't know if it'd be helpful to other board members, to better understand these dollar amounts coming in and going out. I mean, at the high school alone, the student, student activity fund is over two-hundred thousand dollars, I believe. And its, its impact on the budget, to me, is very important. So if you could help, these numbers didn't do it for me. So if you could help understand the impact that the student activity money has on budgeting, so that I can better understand, honestly, how, how there was this extra money in the budget to, to support a new sport, would really be helpful to me when we have to make budget determinations. Am I asking that correctly?
Yeah, you are. I don't have it for you tonight.
No, no, I'm not, no, I'm saying, when the budget rolls around, we have to talk about that, if you can help.
No, I want to have it for you sooner than that, I'm sorry to interrupt you. A profit and loss statement that shows the impact of the budget. A profit and loss statement that shows the impact of the budget. So I'm going to ask Dr. Passell to be with Mr. Corpeck. They'll put together something that you're familiar with as far as a budgetary. Where is the money coming from? Where is it not coming from? And then you could see the impact on the budget.
Thank you.
I have a question about the ticket sales. That money just goes into the Rockville High Student Activity account, correct? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then you use just that amount to purchase athletic equipment? You don't use anything else out of the student activity account, is that correct?
There's different student activity accounts. The athletic and the one-on-two student account, correct? You use that to purchase the athletic department.
Okay, so you have your own activity account, separate from Rockville High's general activity account. Does anybody else have anything else they want? Clear it up?
Just a clarification, Mr. Corpeck's question. When you say similar districts, by dir or geography realms?
By dir, that's fine, okay.
Yeah, tell me which one you want.
All right, so we will have a follow-up on that. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is Education Facilities Committee Report.
Starting at seven point two, I'll just give a brief overview, will be discussed on the summer segment. And that was, we're in the process of still going through the gift from Vernon Little League that sort of dug out at PCMS at the work, that's still in progress. So hopefully by January last, we can do it all firmer. Mr. Pluseau, we went through the school building report, she gives the detail of what's going on regardless of that. And we had a brief overview of the TMBC report. So I don't know if anybody had any questions with that, our brief committee meeting that we had in the second. And then tonight, we have another committee meeting, which brings us to seven, two A, which Mr. Pluseau can give us a rundown of what we discussed earlier tonight.
Good evening. How are you? Thank you for having me here. The first item, or seven point two A, approval of the general improvements to the Alliance District's student grant application. As you know, we put an application in in October for the amount of $531,494. We are asking to be able to put in another application for the January 29 deadline for a total of $718,506. I believe you all have a list of the items that we are going to address with this grant money. Taking a lot of time. It's amazing how quickly, $1.25 million, we go to, you know, 750,000 square feet of buildings. I can go over each individual item, or if anybody just has a specific question, I can go either way.
It'd be easier just to have questions, because it's pretty clear. Does anybody have any questions?
One of the things that we discussed about at the meeting earlier tonight was the bulk of this work, once the grant money is received, will be taking place during the summer months?
Yes, the items that would be intrusive to the learning environment would be done either off hours or during the summer.
Have we heard about the first round? Have we, not still? Any other questions?
Just one for clarification. I see we have tractors and mowers on here. Doesn't Prince Rick Public Works handle that for us?
It's chaired service. The two tractors that are listed are actually snow removal equipment. So we are responsible for the sidewalks and around the schools. So the, and then the mowing, the way the rules are right now is inside, inside the parking lots, inside are the school's responsibilities. Parking lot does help us out in those, also don't.
Thank you. Through the chair. Is this money only offered to Alliance Districts? And do we need how much?
Yes, I'm getting ready for the next one.
How much longer are we going to be in Alliance District, according to the state?
That is a very complex question. But the latest that I've seen is that Alliance funding will continue for the next three school years.
Which is two more than originally intended.
Oh, no, because we're in year four.
Right.
We're in year four.
Seventy-five years.
Correct, so now we're going to be seven. Seven is what we're slated for, but don't hold me to it.
Will we get more of this buildings, right?
This is a new money. I think what happened was, is because Mr. Kemp mentioned it in facilities, because ECS was flat funded for so many years. This is a way to help boost the infrastructure of individual school districts.
And that's because the ECS was flat funded for only the Alliance Districts?
Correct.
I'd be curious to see what the ECS funding looked like for a non-Alliance Districts during the last four years, and see how this compares to that. And I can't imagine that the districts are going up by over a million dollars.
Oh, no, they won't. No, most districts with ECS either flat funded or went down.
I'm thoroughly confused. I mean, I support all the projects. There are all things that need to get done. I don't understand the funding source here. If we're an Alliance District because of test scores, and they're giving us money to buy tractors, it makes no sense to me. And we have no way out, we have no way out of the Alliance. We have no new test scores. Everything is so new, the original Alliance District doesn't even exist anymore. All that we landed in the bottom thirty by, it doesn't exist. It almost doesn't matter anymore. And we're stuck with this label. And now it's like they're throwing money at us for tractors. It's like, is this the way of saying sorry for the bum label that we gave you? We didn't know it was going to have such a bad impact?
I think honestly, if I can, through the chair, I think honestly, they're trying to fund the Alliance Districts, which are mainly urban centers, and give them the money they need in order to do things that they cannot afford to do. Because ECS never went up, or a lack of support for special needs in the camp, or any type of bonding projects. I mean, you've seen already, our technology grant, it was on the bond commission for three months in a row, and it's gotten continued again. So I'm concerned about that application. So, you know, I hate to say it, but we're going to take the money and run.
I agree. I just, I don't understand the program they're in, and for all the negative that we've gotten for being labeled this, money's a nice thing, but I don't understand this at all. I don't understand what the state is doing. I certainly don't understand what they're doing with their budget deficits, the way they are. I don't know.
Just so you clarify, through the chair, this money goes to the state bonding commission? This is all bonded money from the state that they've allocated to all this?
On credit cards.
State credit card.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions in this room?
One thing I'd like to encourage is to, when you're visiting the various PTOs, as mentioned, the facilities money that we have coming in, and what we're going to be doing with that between now and the summer months. So much needed work and equipment, so, thank you.
I didn't see it.
That, and we received the check, correct?
All right, well, the next one.
I move that the Vernon Board of Education approve the Alliance District's school building grant program application.
Three seconds. Any further questions, concerns? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now, moving on to seven point two B, which is the school roof projects.
I'll compare it with Laura McCarron and Pluseau, please.
Update on the school roof projects. We are pretty sure we're familiar with that. We are doing two full roof replacements, one at Skinner Road School and one at Northeast School. We're doing a partial at the Vernon Center Middle School. Are we looking for motions right now? So we need three individual motions for the state grant reimbursement program to accept the specs for each one of these projects.
I move that the Vernon Board of Education approve the educational specifications for the roof project at Northeast School. Appreciate a second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? I didn't vote, sorry. Mrs. Russell did, yes. Okay, that's unanimous, motion carries.
I move that the Vernon Board of Education approve the educational specifications for the roof project at Skinner Road School.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions or comments on that motion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. And lastly?
I move that the Vernon Board of Education approve the educational specifications for the roof project at Vernon Center Middle School. Appreciate a second.
Again, any questions or concerns, comments? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. I just have one question for Mr. Pluseau. When is all this work going to be done?
The work is going to start when school is out. It will be, will not be completed when school starts. School will be able to start, and construction will be scheduled around the school hours.
So how much longer would it take into the school year? Do they have any estimate?
The estimate for PCMS and Northeast School are September 30th. Skinner Road School could go a bit longer, because that's a much more complicated project.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Arne, any questions?
Just for future consideration, there is a solar energy committee in town, and they have been trying for quite some time to get the board's attention regarding solar panels on school buildings. And they've been told repeatedly that the roofs on some of our buildings that they'd like to see that happen are not adequate to support the panels at all. So they've not, that committee has not gone away. It's just been rather stunning. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be appropriate, considering the roof projects, once they're done or moving forward or whatever, that that discussion be regenerated? And I don't know if it's correct for us to do it or not. I just know that that's the reason the committee has been told, is that we just won't support the solar panel project. But if that's no longer the case, then maybe it's time to have that discussion.
Have you had any discussion with that committee?
I have not had a discussion with that committee.
You should look into that, see if there's any.
Just a suggestion for the future.
Can you give me their names?
Sure, sure.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any, do you have anything else on facilities?
That'll be it for tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now, to the Board of Education Finance Committee Report. Mr. Corpeck?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, just to prepare for your commission, we have a full agenda for the Finance Committee. So I'd like to just highlight the one action item to begin with, and then I may give the commission open up the questions and respond to any particular item. The action item before the board this evening is an asset disposal request, which is Exhibit K in the Business and Finance Report. We have assets from the Adult Basic Debt Program, technology equipment, and we also have books from Maple Street School. There's quite a few pages of those assets listed there. So the request is to dispose of those assets consistent with prior practice, posted on public surplus dot com, and donate books or sell books to the county.
And you'll have the motion to approve the asset disposal request? Mrs. Arne, sorry. There are seconds? Any questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries.
Any questions on any particular items? Any board members do you want to check?
Safeties to school grant, does it's Skinner Road School?
Yes.
Where is that at this point in time?
Through Madam Chair to the board. We discussed in Finance Committee that we, under Mr. McCary's administration, decide to give a group of stakeholders that have been participating in this grant since it started back in 2011, to get a sense of where we are in the project, and also bring Mr. Dave Smith, the Town Engineer, to the table as well, who's been a major part of it over the past couple of years. What we looked at, not only historically where we started, but where we want to go moving forward. There were seven projects that were approved in the award from the State Department of Transportation, totaling $491,000 and change. As an outcome from that award, when the town looked at it from the Engineering Department a couple of years ago, you may recall that there was a need for engineering costs, and those fees totaled at the time $50,000, which the board had approved from a capital and non-recurring account requested to the town, which was subsequently approved by the Town Council. Recently, when looking at that project as it was awarded, there was a need for an additional $25,000 in engineering fees. So before we brought that, or wanted to bring that back to the board, with Mr. McCary starting his tenure here, we wanted to look at the project again, relook at it, get the right stakeholders to the table. And we concluded that we may not need that additional $25,000 in additional engineering fees. Rather, we wanted to look at the projects, possibly reprioritize some of the funding. Some of the projects with input from Public Works and the Town Engineers Office, and with our own staff and Board of Education, facilities, and maintenance crews, we may be able to tackle one or two of those projects ourselves in-house, saving us those engineering fees. And that will allow us to repurpose the funds for the other grant projects and enhance them. So we don't have any firm recommendations at this point, but we are pushing forward. We will be spending those funds. We need to spend those funds. And so we will be coming back to this body with information and recommendations of those projects, and any change in scope of projects with input from the town as well.
Have we received the funds already?
The funds are available, but we have not received them in account at this point in time. So we need to start drawing down on that.
And it's not a problem to change the scope of work? You don't have a problem with that?
And that's something we'll work out with the State Department of Transportation. Our new grant writer has been working very closely with the grantor and the program manager of the State Department of Transportation. We're having those conversations. And we've been very upfront, very open with Mr. McCary, with all the stakeholders, keeping them informed of what's happening, including the State Department of Transportation.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any other questions? Mr. Kemp?
Exhibit E, Michael?
Yes, sir.
Exhibit E, in the far right-hand column, halfway down, is where your listing dollars expected in Medicare, executed Medicaid reimbursement. And that's approximately the same amount as last year. I was thinking that, based on some information we heard, that we should expect more than this, because other categories of expenses are to be covered. Could you clarify, please, for instance, the nursing costs and the behaviorists and so on?
Sure, through Madam Chair. So two separate items there, Mr. Kemp. First, you are correct. We will be expanding and taking advantage of every opportunity we can to maximize our Medicaid reimbursement, which is why our projected revenues in total for the reimbursements will be going up substantially. What you're looking at here, secondly, in Exhibit E, are the town of Vernon revenue estimates. These are the revenues that the town will be provided by these activities from the Board of Education. And during the Finance Committee meeting, as we started two years ago, we now provide input to the town in setting these revenue estimates. So this is revenue that the town will be relying on us to provide to the town of Vernon. So the Medicaid line that you're referring to with the $70,000 revenue estimate for the current fiscal year, if you recall, recently we executed Medicaid, an updated or revised Medicaid resolution collaboratively with the town. And that number's actually going to go to $100,000 effective this fiscal year, and it will stay the same for next fiscal year as well. Anything over the $100,000 goes into our special revenue account, basically our rainy day fund for special education that we recently capped in that revised resolution to $350,000. And anything over the $350,000 will go into the Board of Education's capital and non-recurring account.
All right, so these dollars are, this money, this is town money?
Yes, sir.
All right, because we were looking to get more than this number?
Absolutely. To the tune of $300,000 plus.
Yes, that's why I asked.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone have any other questions on Mr. Carr's report? Mrs. Arm?
I don't have a question, but I thought it might be interesting to the other board members. During the Finance Committee, you reviewed savings based on diesel fuel and heating oil. It might be nice if you just did those three quick, it's a good amount.
Absolutely.
Those three quick savings that...
Through Madam Chair to the board, you can turn to your Business and Finance Report, Exhibit F, fiscal year 2017 Connecticut Consortium Fuel Contract. So this is fuel that we've been purchasing through a consortium. It's the ARAM Consortium. There's over a dozen school districts that participate in this particular consortium, and so we highlighted in the Finance Report, Finance Committee, excuse me, current year costs and then next year's savings. Just bear with me while I turn to that in Finance Report. Okay, so for Exhibit F, for the current fiscal year, we'll start with Number Two Heating Oil. This is directly related to budget planning for next fiscal year. We currently purchased 12,000 gallons of Number Two Heating Oil and our cost is $2.48 per gallon. If you look at Exhibit F, for next year, we are able to negotiate through this consortium a fixed prepaid price for the same quantity of Number Two Heating Oil, $1.95 a gallon. So that yields for us a $6,360 savings based on expenditure from the current fiscal year. For diesel fuel, based on trend use and consumption, for the current fiscal year, we have purchased 80,000 gallons at $2.55 per gallon. For next fiscal year 17, we've reduced it, again based on usage, to 75,000 gallons and we secured a fixed prepaid price of $2.02 a gallon, which yields us a total of $29,650 savings over the current fiscal year. And then the one that's not on there, to Mrs. Arm's question, is the unleaded fuel, which we purchased in cooperation with the town of Vernon through Public Works. Together with the town, we were able to yield savings there as well. We currently pay $2.76 per gallon and we purchased 7,950 gallons of unleaded fuel. For next fiscal year, we've locked in $2 per gallon for the same quantity, which yields another $6,040 in fuel cost savings.
The savings on the Number Two Heating Oil was $6,300, you know?
Yes.
Okay. Good to know.
Yeah, that's, that's a savings going, I mean, that's a reduction in the budget and that's like a half a gig to the town.
Any other questions for Mr. Carr or comments? Thank you very much. And we'll move on to discussion on attendance at CADE convention. Who would like to go first? Sheriff, just a little, on what you, what workshops you went to and what you learned? Mrs. Kemp?
Well, I would just like to comment on those morning presentations, which were phenomenal. Every time I hear Wood off the Red Nose Radio, I think of all these special children with all their special gifts and the presenter was just incredible. He, he was extremely, sorry, sorry, sorry. He was extremely, the presenter was extremely knowledgeable, can't say enough about his knowledge base, and so entertaining with how he presented the material. And what I liked on the next day was the president at Eastern Connecticut State University has a program where they're taking Hartford and Manchester students, kids that probably would never have gone to college in the past, and they're just turning out to be educated people who have a whole future, productive future ahead of them. And I, I was never aware of that program and I just think it's, it's incredible, so it was extremely worthwhile going to the conference. Extremely.
Sir, I'm not, I'm not going to bore you with information that you're not interested in, but I did want to say that there were a number of workshops that were offered, and I thought some were better than others, but two that were particularly interesting and relevant to me were trends in populations and then communicating with the community, outreach into the community. And I'd be happy to share the information with anybody who wants it. The other thing I wanted to say was that, what I took away from the conference was we are not alone in our issues. Every, every other town across the state is grappling with the same things that we're grappling with. So maybe there is some, you know, misery gloves company going on, I don't know, but it was nice to hear that they're addressing the same issues we are. So there are resources out there, we can work from each other. And more importantly, it, it inspired me personally to continue to strive and to learn to celebrate the very small victories because the, the large ones come from the accumulation of smalls. So to hear, to hear other school districts sharing their small victories, you may, maybe realize that that's what we need to be doing as well.
Any notes? Okay.
Oh, you do have any notes? Yeah, I would say...
The sessions that I attended that day, I went to Cromwell, did a presentation on their freshman academy. So now their ninth graders do project-based learning across their core areas. They get iPads as freshmen and they have a variety of projects that they work on together as teams. I do have examples of some of their projects that are at home, I'm sorry, but they, they were saying that some of the things they're seeing come out of that is greater teamwork and collaboration among students, a lot of leadership among the students, and their, their older students are a little upset that they didn't have the opportunity. I will say though, something that was interesting to me, so this was their first, in Cromwell, their middle school is not set up in teams as ours is, and that's something they're headed towards now, but I have seen some of that team collaboration going on at BCMS, so that is a good thing, a good sign. I also went to a collaboration workshop and I know it was Meriden, Wallingford, and I can't remember if it was Wellington or Cheshire. It was, it's all four of them? Oh, see? And they actually, their superintendents actually collaborate on all kinds of things, teacher learning, curriculum writing, so not just in shared services cost-wise, but professional services. They work together and when they're using consultants for things, they, they use their consultant, they share the cost of consultants and things like that, so that was an interesting consideration. And then Bloom, I went to Bloomfield's presentation on, you know, some other things they're doing as Alliance District, and their, their presentation was primarily on data. They have a, they have hired a person in central office who's collecting, analyzing, disseminating information. So that was, that was interesting. They're addressing communication as well.
Alden, do you want to share anything?
Sure. Yeah, I also attended the one on Bloomfield, I had the same impressions. I attended one on contract negotiation, which was definitely a misery gloves company experience. And it was another one I attended regarding hiring, higher level positions in lower performing districts and I'll just say, I have nothing else to say, I don't see anything about it.
Mr. Kemp?
I attended several of the modules too, but what I, I'll report on what I did is a little different, which was attending the delegate assembly the evening before. And that's more or less a, an opportunity for boards of education as a whole to take positions on several issues, and there were no less than 77 resolutions that were discussed at that, at that gathering. And I'm not going to go over 77, don't worry.
That's news.
Unless you want me to put this way. But I will touch on a few for you so that you get an idea of the, the variety of issues that are of concern to Connecticut Boards of Education. I opposed a, a position that is advocated by some, for instance, I oppose the expansion of employment of children of compulsory school age. There are elements within the state that would like to create more jobs for kids at lower levels to flip burgers and so on. And so, you know, those of us that are on boards of education generally don't approve of that in any case. We, we made a formal position opposing expansion of compulsory. And that takes, that takes a form of going to our general counsel and then she presents to the legislature formal positions that the Board of Ed has, has adopted, that the, our association has adopted, and lobbies accordingly in, in, at the state capital. So there are several issues and that's, that's one. I supported a, a resolution on learning tasks in kindergarten and readiness programs that are developmentally appropriate. It seems pretty simplistic to us, but I'm telling you, it's not so simplistic at the state level. I supported allowing reductions in staffing, not solely on current seniority systems. I supported requiring, requiring professional development for school board members. It's not required right now, as far as I'm concerned, counselors should do the same thing, but we can only act on school board members. I supported raising the threshold for construction projects subject to the prevailing wage mandate. Right now, we, we have to spend money on prevailing wages at a fairly low level and we support raising that level so we don't have to spend that kind of money unnecessarily in our view. I, I supported retaining the construction project dollars back up to 10%. It didn't used to, it's gone down to 2.5%, which is a ridiculous punchless dollar amount. If, if we're going to do roofs and so on, the contractors only have to keep 2.5% in reserve before they're let, let go, and it used to be a 10% dollar amount, which was intended to cover all of those various things that come up at the end of a project that might not have gotten done. So you want those dollars held out. All right, I'll go through a few others a little quicker. Supported expenditures of public funds to communicate information to the community and to use school communication systems, systems to provide the time, date, and place of referendum. We can't do that now. We want to be able to at least tell people when the heck the referenda are, but we're permit, prohibited from doing so currently. You wouldn't think so, but it is. Oh, I voted to support the continuation of the exemption of preschool from the requirement that boards of education pay tuition for non-special ed students who choose to attend to magnet school. This is under consideration right now at the state level. If they start charging school systems, sending pre-K kids to magnet schools, we are crushed. Right?
Hundred percent right.
Okay. All right. We, I voted to support, and these passed, so not everything did, but I supported the Connecticut State Department to seek a waiver from federal, the federal government, seeking relief from mandated testing requirements. I voted to support a resolution repealing the Cadillac tax. The Cadillac tax is a crusher. It's, it's due in 2018, Michael, and it's a tax of, a huge amount based on the payment for a single plan. It's a 40% penalty, or if it's one person or a family plan, I forget the dollar amounts, but if the Cadillac tax goes through, I mean, you know, it's just, anyway. Oh, I supported a, a resolution that calls for funding of charter and magnet schools that do not include local district funding. I mean, if they're going to have magnet schools, fine. We're having to pay for a lot of them. Why? The state wants these so bad to satisfy Chef O'Neil, let them fund it. Okay? And very quickly, that the state pay its fair share of special education costs directly to boards of ed, in other words, that funding should pass through to us, not stop at town hall, where typically cuts are taken and that goes on. But the, see, special ed funding is, is kind of confusing thing. The state says they'll give us back the excess amount beyond four times the average per pupil expense. Well, they don't do it. They give us back what they feel they can afford in any given budget year. So when we spend it beyond what's a normal expense for, for a child, and they tell us you'll get back four times that, that would be nice, at least if you get it back. It has to go through town hall and then by the time we see it, it's a lot less than we would, than we've spent mandated that we spent. Okay? Hey, lost my place, sorry. Oh, that the, as Jonathan was talking about, that Alliance District grants not be part of the ECS funding for the simple reason that they are, flat funding is now and we don't want the Alliance District funding to get baked into the ECS payments. If they do, it'll all be absorbed in there and we'll, we'll just get hurt further. There are some labor issues and I'll end with those. To eliminate the arbiter's presumption to favor past practices in arbitration decisions. Right now, they favor past practice and so we're, we're hurt in that way. The financial capability of the town be given priority consideration by arbiters and that job descriptions be changeable without impact negotiations. Why don't we have the right to change whatever we want people to do here? We have to, we have to sit down at the table and ask them, is that okay? Can we just do that? Why? So, and, oh, and finally, in the area of special ed, that the needs of the entire class be considered in placement decisions. So those are some of the 77 that we discussed and fortunately passed most of them, and that's what I was doing the night before.
It is four minutes before 10, so we need a motion to extend, Mr. Carr.
Motion to extend curfew to end of business.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Russell? And any comments, questions, concerns? He says he's retired. Okay, all in favor?
Yes. Okay. I believe on the last one, I, it was interesting that Lori was talking about project embedded, project-based learning, because I went to one on Saturday that did the same thing, but it was a different school system. It was New Fairfield Schools in their middle school and they phased it in, they started with the sixth grade and moved on each year after that. They did not give all their students iPads though, they said bring your own device, or maybe they supplied it for those that didn't have them, but, but it was, it was interesting and I think that New Fairfield probably didn't really manage it anyway, but their district goal was to focus on problem solving using the five Cs, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity, and connections, which sounds very similar to what I saw. And the other one I went to was engaging teacher leaders, which was saying that teacher leadership has emerged as a national trend and it's a good way to inform instruction and improve instruction, which I think we...
which I think we saw a lot from our teacher coaches tonight, how teacher leaders can really make a difference in their district. That was it. Mr. McCary, where did you go?
So I attended two, just two ones that I'll highlight. One is how Lead Connecticut can help train principals as leaders, and how do we go about it, and what do we do to, just as you saw today with the instructional coaches, how do we support teachers, or how do we support administrators? Because that's a critical factor in finding good teachers and putting them in front of people. The other one was Manchester just received the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. It got seven of what we were trying to do and try to speak to.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for all of us?
Did anybody go to the State Board of Education meeting? It was held at a time that I couldn't.
That's one of the meetings, Mr. Russell.
You know? Okay.
All right, we will move on to item 7.5. Thank you, everybody, for going and giving a report to us here. 7.5, and we need a motion to go into executive session for our last three items. Mr. Kent?
I move that the Vernon Board of Education go into executive session to discuss school security, pending claims and litigation, and the superintendent's evaluation. And I invite, and we invite the, we invite Mr. Picaro to join us for the school security segment, and the superintendent for the entire executive session.
We invite Mr. Picaro for the pending claims.
And the pending claims, too?
Yes.
I think I said, and the pending claims.
Is there a second? Second, Mrs. Arm. And all those in favor? Lauren, are you the host? Okay, he's gonna. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So what happens, I know...
We ready for it? Okay, we're out of executive session. We can move on to item 8.0 to review and update the Board of Education calendar. Does anyone have anything for the calendar? Okay, 9.0, opportunity for questions from the press. They're not here. So we have one last motion. Mr. Copac?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is George. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Nannas. All right, now we can continue our conversation.